Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular Board of Education meeting to order. This is Monday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. It's just a couple of minutes after seven P. M. in the evening, and this meeting is being held virtually, basically because of the weather tonight. So we thought it'd be safer for everyone if we did it virtually and accomplish all that we can. I'd like to welcome everyone that's here tonight, board members, Dr. Murphy, the superintendent, senior staff, other presenters are here, and all of you people that have joined us virtually, we welcome you to our meeting. Item number two is under the opening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask Dr. Murphy if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Murphy?
All right, Dr. Queen, thank you very much. You could all stand. And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, item number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion from the board to approve the agenda as presented?
Second is back with.
Motion and second to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? They carry unanimously. Item number four on the agenda is the recognitions, and the first one is student recognitions, and that's going to be Mr. Dillinger is going to introduce the West Virginia Student Success Leadership Council, and we'll introduce the students from the four high schools that participated in that leadership council. So Don Dillinger, if you would introduce the participants, please.
Thank you, Dr. Queen and board members. It gives me pleasure this evening to introduce four Berkeley County school students who had the opportunity to participate with not only other high schools, students from across the state, student leaders, but also from several of our universities and colleges in a leadership forum. With us this evening, we have Caitlin Hadley from Hedgesville High School, Maria Morris from Martinsburg High School. I have not seen Hope yet, but I hope Hagley from Musman High School, and Nadia Sloanaker from Spring Mills High School. They participated in a program called the West Virginia Student Success Leadership Council. College students representing a dozen higher education institutions from across the state met virtually with a little more than thirty high school seniors from across West Virginia. This meeting was to discuss ways that they could work together to encourage high school students to pursue and plan for post-secondary education. In this inaugural meeting of this newly established student leadership council, student leaders talked about the barriers young people and their families face when it comes to applying for colleges, especially in light of the COVID- nineteen crisis. And then they discussed how these student leaders can positively influence their peers. The Student Success Leadership Council was organized by the West Virginia Higher Education Policy Commission and the West Virginia Department of Education. Again, it was comprised of student body presidents and leaders from the state colleges, universities, and high schools. The group was formed, especially this year, after they realized that there has been a drop in financial aid and college applications. And there was a desire to talk with the high school students about the importance of higher education and what we can do to encourage more of our students to apply not only for colleges, but also financial aid. At this time, we'd like to give each of our students an opportunity to say hello and also talk about their participation in this event. So we'll start with Caitlin Happy from Hedgesville.
Good evening. Thank you so much for adding me to the meeting. The West Virginia Success Leadership Board was incredible experience to just connect with Maria, Nadia, and Hope, but also with the rest of the students from West Virginia, because even though we have so much diversity in West Virginia, it seems like we're all going through the same problem, which is a drop in FAFSA. And we did discuss that a lot. I think he said the numbers were about eight percent down, which it's a lot of heartbreaking, because I would like to see the rest of my peers, you know, go for good futures. So I think we talked about one thing is that when we go back to our schools, we want to talk to administrators about, you know, promoting how to fill out FAFSA, because it's still not too late. We still have until March first. So it's just something that we need to really push and really encourage that the rest of the seniors who haven't filled out the FAFSA to fill it out and participate into a better future.
Thanks, Caitlin. Maria?
Hi, thank you so much for having me today. And I am just so grateful for the opportunity to talk to different peers and mentors from around our state about all of the education options after high school. It was really eye-opening to talk to so many others that are in the same situation as me as seniors and discuss different problems we are facing and how we can go back into our community. One thing that really stuck out to me there that we talked about was not your typical university education after high school, but also promoting communities, colleges, or technical schools. And I realized that a lot of people didn't understand that that was an option for them. So hopefully, when we're back in school, I can help promote all of the different options for education after high school.
Thank you, Maria, and that's, and, you know, the community colleges and other sources of post-secondary education are very important. Thank you for pointing that out. Appreciate that. Also with this is Nadia Sloanaker from Spring Mills High School.
Hi, thank you for having me on here tonight. I really loved that I was able to not only talk with Kayla and Maria, but I was able to talk with teenagers all around West Virginia. Like Maria said, it was very eye-opening to see that other students were also in the same boat as I was. One thing that really stuck out to me is kind of what Maria said. Kids usually, especially girls, they think they can only be a teacher or a nurse when there's really so many other career options out there that they could be. And I think West Virginia should really work on showing not only girls, but also boys that there are so many different options into what they can go into with different majors and why not. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Nadia. And Hope, and I do not see Hope on our list of panelists. Unfortunately, she.
Donnie, we're having some trouble getting her in. Maybe we can circle back in a little while and see if she's been able to get in.
Thank you, Elaine. Again, Caitlin and Maria and Nadia, thank you so much, and we're very proud of the fact that you all were able to participate in this inaugural Student Leadership Council, and certainly the information that you gain, you will bring back and share within your high schools. And that'll be a big help to our teachers and our counselors and our other seniors that are there. We are very proud of our four high schools and the quality of those high schools and the quality of our students in them. And I was a high school principal at Hedgesville. And one thing that we always talked about was just that if you could tell the quality of your school by the quality of your student leaders and speaking with your principals and your teachers. Each of you represents your schools very, very well. And the fact that you are outstanding leaders also helps with the other students. And so, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Queen.
Elaine, has Hope signed in yet? Did I see her?
I don't know. Dave, there's another attendee waiting. Would that be her?
I don't know. I see Sydney right out there.
Hi, sorry.
Dave, Kenny, can you hear me?
Actually, Hope is logged in.
There she is.
Hi, Hope. Can you hear us?
Hi, how are you guys doing?
Thank you, Hope. Not a problem. We are just glad that you were able to make it. And, you know, we've introduced you, but Hope, we would like for you to to share with us your experiences with the Student Leadership Council.
So my experience with the Student Leadership Council was honestly extraordinary. I think it was such a breath of fresh air, all the other student perspectives, and even from different colleges. It was great, because we learned about FAFSA and we learned about ways to get our student body more involved. Like at Musman, we have some FAFSA ideas, such as doing a core nap, filling out your FAFSA and things like that, that came from the panel. And I just think it was amazing to have such an incredible opportunity and meet so many different people across our state to come together. And that honestly wouldn't be possible unless we had Zoom. So if it wouldn't be for the COVID pandemic, we wouldn't have had such a great experience.
Thank you, Hope, and we're proud of you, and thank you for the experiences. And we're certain that you'll bring a lot of information back to Musman High School and your fellow seniors and other students. I would encourage all of you not to just spread this information among the seniors, but also it's very, very important for, you know, the ninth graders, the tenth graders, and the eleventh graders to know, you all have been through it now. You're the ones with experience. You can give them the advice. Dr. Queen?
I want to thank Caitlin, Maria, Hope, and Nadia. All of you are so articulate and well-spoken. I know that you all have represented your schools very well, and we appreciate and congratulate you for being on this inaugural Success Leadership Council that you all have represented your schools for. So it's so nice. We're so proud of you all, and we wish you the best going forward with your education. It's so nice to see such nice young ladies and speak so well for their classes. So thank you so much. Okay, item number two under recognitions is the Distinguished Service Award. And Principal Shane Schaefer, the principal at Beddington Elementary School, is going to introduce the recipient of that award. Shane, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
All right, the recipient of my award for the Service Personnel Award is Mr. David Jordan, and he's our full-time custodian here at Beddington Elementary School. And he was the first person I met at Beddington Elementary School. And he was supportive and respectful from the beginning. He made me feel at home. He did so many wonderful things, and I'm going to give some examples of why he's deserving of this award. And one of the first things I can think of is that any teacher, when they need something, they call Mr. Jordan. Whether he needs, you know, fixed, or there's been some kind of accident, he's right there. Even if the teacher calls him two or three times the same day for the same issue, Mr. Jordan never complains. He has a smile on his face, and he goes and helps them out. When there was the snowstorms, he takes care of that for me. I don't have to worry about anything. I know it's taken care of. He communicates. He's the next up communicator with that, and everything's ready for the teachers and the students when schools reopen. We've had a few emergency issues with the alarms. He's taking them for me as well. He communicates that as well. We had an interventionist with the brick and click schedules. They've had to change the schedules, and we had to move classrooms. And Mr. Jordan, up and down the steps, he goes with the materials and the teachers, you know, instructional supplies, and he sets her up for me every single time with no problems. And it benefits our students and the staff. The playgrounds with the mulching was there to help direct that and get that ready for the students this year. He also, there was a time in the school year where we had only one custodian, and we couldn't get a substitute for our evenings, and Mr. Jordan had to do double-time, double-work. And once again, there was no complaints. He just did what he had to do for the school and the staff and the students, and it went very smoothly, even with that kind of issue. And the last thing I wanted to let everybody know out there that Mr. Jordan always has a smile on his face. He's always positive. And the best thing about Mr. Jordan is he puts the students and the staff first. So my winner, as I said, is Mr. David Jordan. He's going to come over here and accept his award.
Shane, would you read the plaque for us, sir?
Yes, sir. It says, distinguished service award presented to David Jordan for your outstanding service to Berkeley County schools. We thank you for your valuable contributions to the success of our students. And it's given by the Berkeley County Board of Education for February two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Hey, David. Hey, David. This is Dr. Queen. I just want to thank you for going above and beyond what the call of duty is as a custodian. You're such an important role in that school of keeping it clean and keeping it in a condition that people want to learn in. You know, Beddington is not a new school, and it's a tough school to maintain, but that school is absolutely immaculate and it's done such a great job. But thank you, sir. We appreciate it so much for you going above and beyond. Thank you. Thanks, Shane.
Thank you.
Item number three under the recognitions is the Volunteer of the Month, and Principal Tana Burkhart and Assistant Principal Craig Arch are going to introduce the recipient of the Volunteer of the Month Award now. So Tana, Craig?
Thank you, Dr. Queen. First of all, I would just like to say how valuable our volunteers are to the Berkeley County school system. I can't say enough about it. And it's really an honor and a pleasure to be able to recognize Carolyn Price, who is the recipient of this award. It's kind of a unique situation. I hired Carolyn's husband as our computer lab instructor, and it was kind of a two-for-one. And Carolyn just has volunteered and helped him with technology. She is wonderful with our students. When we were in school and she could be at school, she did so many things for the kids. She helped with our library and our book fair, and she also helped with our Secret Santa. And, you know, the technology issue is still a big deal. And I just have to recognize her and her dedication, because she actually comes to the school on the weekends and helps her husband reconfigure the computers or help clean up the lab or whatever it might be. So she has just been invaluable to our students, and she's just smiling on her face all of the time. And I found this excerpt that I want to read, because I think it says a lot about volunteers. Volunteers do not necessarily have the time. They just have the heart. You make a living by what you get. You make a life by what you give. Volunteers are the only human beings on the face of the earth who reflect this nation's compassion, unselfish caring, patience, and just plain loving one another. And again, I think that that says everything about Carolyn Price. This is the plaque that she will be receiving. And it says, "You make a difference as an outstanding volunteer for Berkeley County schools, awarded to Carolyn Price, February two thousand and twenty-one." Thank you, Carolyn.
Is Carolyn there, Tana?
She was.
I was here.
There she is.
I'm here somewhere.
Hey, Carolyn, thank you so much. The technology aspect of our schools right now is so important, and you and Mr. Price have done such a wonderful job at that school at Opeckin, just making it run very well. I see and hear about you folks, and it's amazing how our volunteers can inspire other people to be even better than they thought they might be. But Tana's right. We can't operate our schools without our volunteers. You mean so much to that school, to that principal, assistant principal, the staff, the students, everyone else around you. So Carolyn, thank you so much for being a volunteer, and it's a very prestigious award, and I congratulate you for that. There you are.
There I am. Yeah.
And thank you, Carolyn, for making your husband the guy that he is, so.
Oh, well, thank you, Dr. Queen. Yeah, we're a pair.
Great. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another student recognition, and that is, let me see here. I was just informed about that. Dr. Walker is going to introduce the student for this Black History Month. So Veronique, are you there?
I'm here. Good evening.
Welcome. Thank you.
Dr. Queen and fellow board members, tonight we have with us six students who have put together a three-to-five-minute presentation in honor of Black History Month. One of the things that we encouraged them to do was to share any aspect about Black History Month that was of special interest to them, whether it was a family tradition, whether it was a figure in contemporary or history, historical past that they wanted to honor. And so we have with us this evening Elijah from Tomahawk Intermediate, Donovan from Orchard View Intermediate, Malaya from North Middle School, Sydney from North Middle School, Mercy from Spring Mills High, and Dakota from Hedgesville High. So we're going to start with Elijah, and he's going to share a three-to-five-minute presentation in honor of Black History Month. Elijah?
Hello, my name is Elijah Glover. I'm a fourth grader who goes to Tomahawk Intermediate School. I'm the son of Maria and Zachary Glover. My mother's dad is from Mexico. My father's parents are descendants of people from the continent of Africa. My dad has a big family whose roots extend from Kearneysville, West Virginia, Berryville, Virginia, and South Carolina. My grandmother's family is rooted in Kearneysville, West Virginia, and goes as far back as the eighteen hundreds, according to our family's documents. Fifty years ago was the beginning of our annual family reunion tradition, a time when we celebrate simply being a family. Another tradition is our Family Labor Day cookout. This function is bigger and more exciting than our family reunion, with an average turnout of around five hundred people. Either way, in both functions, we eat lots of food. This is where you'll find different kinds of soul foods, such as corn pudding, sweet potatoes, collard greens, fried chicken, deep-fried fish, and the world's best macaroni and cheese. These family recipes have been passed down for years. Another huge aspect of the African-American life is faith. Historically, faith has been a big part of the African-American experience since the beginning of this country. People like Harriet Tubman, who was called Moses, because she led so many people free, are examples of people who trusted God during times of difficulty. A reason why there is a thing called the Black Church is because African-Americans found faith, family, and community during a time when African-Americans and European-Americans could not worship God in a single local church. For my dad, faith is a big part of his life. He has a bookcase full of books, and I regularly see him reading. I know education is important, because I see my dad with a book in his hand often. He has given me books from his own collection, so I can build my own personal library. One thing we do more than most is we go to the barber shop to get haircuts. According to my dad, the barber shop is a time when real conversations can take place and friends can meet up. In conclusion, there seems to be four Fs that we love and value. They are family, food, faith, and faith. Thank you.
Thank you, Elijah.
Great job, Elijah.
Next on our list is Donovan from Orchard View Intermediate.
First of all, I want to say thank you for having me here.
We're so happy to have you. Donovan, go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name's Donovan Nichols. I am a click student at Orchard View Intermediate School. I am a robotics club and math twenty-four club. If we were in school, I would also be in running club. I am a baseball player. Baseball became my favorite sport the first time I hit the baseball. Baseball helped me during this pandemic, because it helps me release stress. I imagine the ball is corona, and I try to hit it out of the park. One person that I admire is Ken Griffey Jr. He played in the Major League Baseball for twenty-two years. He played for the Seattle Mariners, Cincinnati Reds, and White Sox. He was MVP, Hall of Famer. He is a thirteen-time All-Star, multiple Gold Glove awards, and he hit six hundred thirty home runs in his career. Ken Griffey Jr. is also the man responsible for Jackie Robinson Day. Jackie Robinson is another great black baseball player. I also think that is awesome. He was able to play a professional sport with his dad and be on the same team. Yes, his dad was also an MLB player. They were first father-son duo to hit back-to-back home runs. They played fifty-one games together. Recently, he was announced as a senior advisor to MLB commissioner. This made me happy that he's still involved in baseball. Ken Griffey is my favorite baseball woman, because he shows that you can have fun doing what you love if you work hard.
Thank you, Donovan.
Thanks, Donovan.
Next, we have Malaya from North Middle School.
Well, my name is Malaya. I'm an eighth-grade honors student at Martinsburg North Middle School. I'm very honored, nervous, and excited to be speaking with you in regards to Black History Month, the traditions, and our community in general. So, thank you. I was asked, what type of person do I look up to? Like, who do I look up to? Well, I don't look up to a specific person. There are so many people who I look at that, like, they change how we live today and our life and our community altogether. Some people would say, I would look up to Harriet Tubman, Martin Luther King Jr., Langston Hughes. They are people to remember and to look up to, but I like to look up to people in my community, like people who made the roots of Martinsburg. For instance, Noah Northern Green was the first black masonary in Martinsburg, and his good friend J.R. Clifford, J.R. Clifford, who was actually the first black attorney in West Virginia. Mr. J.R. Clifford was also known as the first first black attorney, and he's the case Williams versus the Board of Education of Tucker County, was the first ruling in the U.S. history to determine the racial discrimination was illegal, because back then, there was segregation in our schools, and he said it wasn't right. So he won that case, and he's one of the reasons that our education in schools today is full of different races, like black, white, Mexican, and all of the above. Another person I also look up to is actually my uncle Leonard Harris. You may know him, you may not, but he actually integrated the Warren River Park and even stopped the journal newspaper from using the N-word. Like, we all know what that is. We don't have to go into detail. And additionally, as we know, the world changing, COVID happened, and like for the past year or two, our world is not what it usually was back then. Like, in two thousand and eighteen, it's all changed. And there's traditions that we should, like... And there's traditions that we should, like, that are different, but that we should also learn about. Like Juneteenth, we all, not a lot of people know about this, but it's the Black Independence Day. It's kind of like Fourth of July, but Fourth of July is for, or July Fourth, Independence Day for all. And I feel like it should be no more, Juneteenth, it's Black Independence Day. And it makes me happy every time that day comes around because it's a day for us and like it just, it ma, it makes, it should make everyone happy and everyone, it should be known. And I think this one, I didn't notice. Our family tradition of mine that I was recently introduced to was the annual homecoming of Johnson Town. And Johnson Town is located in Jefferson County, West Virginia, was founded by George and Betsy Johnson in eighteen forty-eight. Johnson Town is known as the free, a free black community in West Virginia, which was equipped with a one-room schoolhouse and church. And each year, my grandmother's family gathers the second week in August to celebrate the history of our ancestors.
Thank you.
Thanks, Malaya.
We had, next we have Sydney from North Middle School.
Hi, my name's Sydney. I'm from North Middle School and I'm a clique student. And the person that I pick that I look up to is my mom. Ooh, I'm about to cry, sorry. Ooh, she's my, I love her so much. She is like the strongest person I know. And I look up to her so much, she works so hard. Oh, my God, I'm crying. I'm so sorry. I love her so much, she works so hard. And I picked one of my favorite poems, my mom. Like, it reminds me of her. And, you know, she's the manager, she's like in charge of almost all, like a lot of people, and they always put her down and swear that she, um, that she doesn't deserve to be in charge of them. And I think that's so true. She's so strong. I think that's so much true. She's so strong and she works so hard. And every time they say something to her that really puts her down and hurts her, she always, she brushes it off and gets back up and keeps going every single day. So I picked from To Do New Truth and she delivered it on, um, in nineteen fifty-five and it was a woman's convention, a women's convention in Idaho and it was when she, then, back then they were fighting for women's rights. That man over there says that women need to be held into carriages and listed over ditches and have to, and have to have the best place everywhere. Nobody helps me into carriages. Over my poses, it gives me the best place. And in our women, look at me, look at my arms. I have plods implanted and gathered into barns. No man could head me. And in our women, I could work, work as much and eat as much as a man when I could get it and bear the lashes well. And in our women, I have born thirteen children and seen most of them sold off to slavery and I cried out with my mother's grief and none but Jesus could heard me. And in our women. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Helen. Like, this is so exciting.
Next, we have Mercy from Spring Mills High School.
Hi, my name is Mercy Fadavi and I'm currently attending Spring Mills High School. I'm in the ninth grade and I'm Nigerian. My parents are also Nigerian, both of my parents from both sides. Um, something that, um, that's really important during this time of us is spending time as a family and really going back to our history and really learning about where we came from and our culture and something, the three most important things of our culture are religion, our food, and our customs and virtues, like respect to your elders, that's like our number one. And first, I'm going to talk about our food because that's my favorite part, of course, because I love our food. I mean, it's really fatty and oily, but it fills you up and like after, it's just so sweet spending your time with your family, talking with your bellies full, it's just such a great moment. Um, we have a lot of stews and soups and starches, like the list goes on and I'm going to name some of them. I don't know if you've ever had them or tasted them, but we have Agusi soup, Obono soup, Okro soup, and we use fufu, which is actually a food that you eat with your hands and you dip it in stew and it's so good. Um, but yeah, something really important to us is eating food, honestly, and coming together to make the food and really spending time and learning about the ingredients and how to cook the ingredients, season them. Because like food is really important to us and it really connects, connects us and help us, you know, connect and ease times, like when times are tense and we're having problems, I feel like food is the number one thing that helps calm us down, bring us together, and just realize what's happening and what we're going through and how we could get through anything, honestly, when we just come together and really talk about it. Um, something else, like I said, one of the top things for us is religion. Um, it really goes back into our history, like even from slavery, how we really trusted in God and we always prayed and hoped and had faith. That's the number one thing. And as a child growing up in Nigerian, something they really instill in their children is having a relationship with God and learning how to talk to Him and call upon Him. Like, when you're sick, the number one thing is not to go to the medicine cabinet, but to pray on the part that you're hurting and, and just to be able to freely talk to Him about your problems and your needs and all types of things so that you won't be stressed because He handled things, He handles things for you and that, you know, you'll get past any obstacle that you have stumbled upon. Another thing that my family is really, 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 really accustomed to is family time and really talking about what we need to, you know, show in our life and how to respect our elders and our teachers and everything, and also how to present ourselves. Um, because, you know, as a minority in this world, in some instances, it's really important how you carry yourself and how you talk and what you do because it could be viewed the wrong way or it could be misunderstood and really point across without, you know, wait, sorry. Get your point across respectfully and, you know, just to do things the right way. Um, but yeah, that's really important to us and really important to all of our generations and it's passed down frequently and talked about very frequently in our culture and in my household as tradition. A person that I really look up to is my mom. I'm about to cry, just like, like, I'm about to cry. She actually just walked into the house. But, um, mothers in our culture are the number one. They're the peacemaker, they're the homeholder. They're the everything, they're everything. Um, there's actually a song that I sang at my grandma's birthday when, not too long ago, I think it was two years ago. And it's a song that's named Iya Niwore and it's mother is gold because the mother is the number one thing in your life and the person that always holds all the children up and the dads, you know, the mom just has everybody back. She's a backbone and she is really gold and she's precious and she's just wonderful and very valuable. So I know I would not be coming this far in my life without my mom and have so much pride in my culture and my traditions and love my hair and my skin and our clothing and everything without her. So she was really important and really important in the culture, mothers all around, aunties, every female figure, older female figure, elder female figure, she is just pure gold. I would even say a diamond, but you know. Um, and that's really it.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
And lastly, we have Dakota from Hedgesville High School.
Okay, um, my name's Dakota Johnson and I'm eleventh grader and I go to Hedgesville High School. Um, I'm involved in pretty much everything because who likes to sit in the house? But I can name some, I'm involved in violin strings. Um, I am starting a multicultural club at Hedgesville High School, so woo-oo. I also run, if you can't tell, I really love running, cross-country track, anything long distance, I'm on it, you know. And, uh, so, um, some stuff I actually previously just learned about my history, my family history, it took me by surprise, so I want to share some of it. Um, my, uh, like mentioned before by the other young ladies and Donovan, um, uh, women are like the backbone in my family. And yes, the men are strong, but I feel like I look up to the women in my past to bring me where I am now. And, you know, uh, wow, they just do a lot, like, for, for the family, like, you know, when we're sad, they're there to like comfort us. Um, recently, some uprising in my family has happened and they were there for us. But some family history I like to share is that, you know, um, a tradition we used to have growing up was every Sunday, we used to have a dinner at someone's house. It was just dinner. Sunday, we eat dinner, start the week off, very great, you know. Um, it'd be our cousins, aunts, uncles, you know, you name it, everybody, even the kids on the block. They was in the house, you know. We always just loved to beat each other and, you know, we were very close knit at the time being, but of course, as generations went on and time went on and people found different occupations. Um, my grandmother, actually, she was a nurse in the Vietnam War and, um, wow, she was a really wise woman and she actually was born and raised in Germany. So I'm confused why I'm in America right now, but you know, it's, it's all good. And, um, you know, on my mother's side of the family, um, my great-great, I call her granny, my great-great granny, she, um, uh, she was a part of a tribe, an Indian tribe. And if I'm not mistaken, the tribe was called, um, Blackfoot? Not, I'm not sure, but I know it has the word foot in it. And basically, um, like I said, uh, food was like our way of comforting. They always have like big feasts, like outside and like bonfires. Um, they did music, they, they really focused on the healing from God and like, you know, um, they use that as a resolution to any and everything, good, bad, in the middle, you're sad, pray, you're hurt, pray, you know. And just different like house remedies. I don't know if you call them like, you know, like, oh, drink ginger ale if you're not feeling well, or oh, petit rio in the bathtub. We are CEO of putting, putting anything in our home to make us feel better. And I mean, I'm still alive, so. Um, another thing I actually just found out when I just asked my mom some curious questions, I found out that actually some people in my family, on my mother's side, my grandmother's mother, she was chariotee, chariotee, chariotee. And I think that's where I get my hair from, so thank you. And, um, the problem with that is she didn't like black people. So when my, when my great-grandfather married my great-grandmother, she was like not having it. So I was just like, oh, okay. Um, I found out that, uh, there was this group called the Chitlin Sisters. I don't like chitlins and I'm pretty sure no one else does, but the Chitlin Sisters was a blues and jazz band where basically it was full of African-American and black women and they go around and they perform in different areas and districts where blacks weren't really allowed to perform. So I thought that was really amazing. I'm actually going to try to look that up after this call because that's amazing too. Um, yeah, I just, yeah, we celebrate a lot of, we celebrate the typical American holidays, like, you know, everything else. But another thing that is very deeply runnily in my family is, um, Kwanzaa and Christmas. And Christmas is not a normal Christmas actually for us. We typically like to appreciate things. Yes, we give the gifts, you know, every now and then, but for the most part, we really just sit in a room and talk about the past and the great achievements we have like accomplished and what we're, what's our next plan? Because, you know, new year, new me slogan, you know. And I just love how I can be motivated within my family and spread that to other people because in my family kindness is like heavy. You aren't to disrespect like anyone, no matter if it's a kid, even though sometimes we have our conflicts, no matter if it's a kid or an adult. And, um, yeah. And another thing I'd like to share, I'm sorry, is, um, my dad actually, back in the day, he was a rapper and his name was D.O.A.D. Um, I'm not going to share any of the names of his songs, but he was very good and he's still alive today. So I love that. Dad is, dad is my best friend, for sure.
Thank you, Dakota. Thank you for sharing with us today. We appreciate each and every student that had the opportunity to share for Black History Month. Can we give them a round of applause, please? Dr. Queen, we turn it back over to you.
I want to say congratulations and thank you to all the six students that presented tonight for Black History Month. Uh, you, again, you all speak so well and have done such a great job. I congratulate all of you. Thank you for contributing tonight. It means so much. Thank you. Okay, item number five on the agenda is the Citizens Forum. And I do have someone that's signed up to speak at Citizens Forum, but I need to read the rules about Citizens Forum.
Dr. Queen, excuse me. Dr. Queen, no one has actually signed in for that.
Good, okay. Thank you. Item number six on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, in that we have the minutes of the regular meeting on February first, twenty twenty-one. We have chaperone lists from three different schools. We have thirteen curricular and extracurricular trip requests. We have four use of school property requests. We have nine budget supplement requests and seventeen budget transfer requests. We need to approve the payment of bills and approve the invoices, uh, the financial reports and the treasures board all for the month ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Dr. Gilpin to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Item number seven on the agenda is the pre-K literacy model framework. Mr. Banks?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Queen. I would like to introduce some folks from Department of Instruction who are going to talk to you this evening. Uh, we have Robin Lewis, Betty Ann Powell, and Jessica Keller with us tonight, who are going to share some, and Bev Hoffmaster, who are going to share some information with you. Uh, I will turn it over to Robin and let her take it away. Thank you, Robin.
Good evening, President Queen, board members, Dr. Murphy and administrative staff. Next slide, please. Our objectives for this evening are to provide an overview of the key takeaways of Policy twenty-five-ten, the alignment between the district strategic plan and our literacy initiatives, review the pre-K five BCS literacy model framework, share outcomes of the campaign to read by grade level, delve into the role of the BCS academic literacy coaches and literacy interventionists, explain Title One supports for K-five and our recommendations for moving forward. Next slide, please.
I'm sorry, my mic was off. Policy twenty-five-ten, the key takeaways for early learning programs, which assures that we have quality programs in grades pre-K to five, says that according to, um, literacy, we should have create pre and language-rich environments, design and equip classrooms that support small and individual learning, focus on integrated developmentally appropriate instruction that includes student-driven experiences based on interest and prior knowledge and provide personalized instruction based on formative assessment. That means collecting authentic evidence, that's a central component to documenting students' progress.
Everything we do is aligned to the district strategic plan. The department's SMART goal for reading is by June twenty-twenty-six, one hundred percent of students will be on grade level or make more than one year's worth of growth in reading as measured by both formative and summative assessments. Some of the action steps we have in place to help us accomplish our goal are, we are establishing a strong restart to the BCS literacy model. We've created a literacy advisory committee. We're growing literacy leaders to strengthen the district-wide literacy. We're collaborating with federal programs to support interventions and we're providing interventionists at K-three to support early And we're providing interventionists at K three to support early literacy skills. At the elementary level, we have a total of twenty one schools and our enrollment is fairly consistent across. All grade levels except for first grade. In two thousand nineteen twenty, the kindergarten enrollment cutoff date in West Virginia was moved from September first to July first. The enrollment in first grade, which is the gray bar, reflects the impact of that change. Next slide, please. You're looking at the trend data for ELA. The orange bars represent data prior to the implementation of the BCS literacy framework. The gray and yellow bars represent our performance over the next two years after implementation. We, we, uh, we're beginning to make gains. During this time, third grade gained seven percentage points, fourth grade. Gained four percentage points and fifth grade gained nine percentage points. Now, if we look at the same cohort of students as third graders. Prior to the implementation of the literacy framework, they were at forty five percent proficient. As fourth graders, they were at forty seven percent proficient and as fifth graders, they were at fifty two percent proficient. Overall, as a cohort, they gained seven percentage points. Next slide, please. To focus on continuous improvement, we established a literacy advisory committee that consists of teachers, academic coaches. Administrators and central office personnel to provide guidance and to support the district's literacy initiatives, which are curriculum. Intervention, literacy framework, ELA instructional materials adoption and spotlight schools. Next slide, please. We also revisited our literacy model framework, which is research-based and grounded in the reading. Workshop methodology. The workshop model has a simple, basic structure that allows a teacher to accommodate the complex work. Students do in whole group, small group and independent work. It allows teachers to tailor each day's teaching to the learning needs of their students. In reading, the reading workshops, students spend the bulk of their time reading. In addition to this model, we, this year, we added a pre-K focus to help with the transition from pre-K to K. As we move through the presentation, we are going to help you envision what this looks like and sounds like in the classroom. Beth.
As you can see from the pictures, the picture on the left is the beginning of the reading workshop. It's twenty five minutes and it's when we meet with the whole group. This first part includes pre-K to fifth grade. It's called interactive read aloud and it lasts about fifteen to ten minutes, ten to fifteen minutes. Teachers gather the students in a whole group and read a grade-level text to them, pausing periodically to talk about the text. I might say, what do you predict will happen next? Then I'll have the students turn and talk to each other. We might stop and jot, or we might stop and sketch what we think is gonna happen next in that story. This is really good because students can think about it, they can talk about it, and they can respond to the text. Interactive read aloud is important because it models proficient reading and what good readers do. It expands students' knowledge, language and vocabulary. And it allows our readers to experience rich, interesting texts that are age and grade level appropriate. This year, we are reaching down to pre-K and focusing on this component, interactive reading aloud for our model. Our next step, the picture on the right pertains to just grades K to two. These are called literacy workstations. The time we spend on those are about fifteen to twenty minutes. Students work independently at stations while the teacher is working with the small guided reading groups. I might have four or five stations going on at the same time. The stations provide intentional, purposeful and meaningful literacy activities that are engaging. And link to taught skills. Here they practice and extend the learning. We can differentiate those centers to meet the needs of all of our students. We provide choices for the students that have grade-level skills that they practice and extend. Some examples of centers that I might use in my classroom are word work where the students use magnetic letters. To write their spelling words, might be a buddy reading station, a listening station or writing station. Why do we use literacy stations? These engaging activities focus on practice and purpose. It's that you do. So when we do interactive read aloud, it, it's like I do. Then when we share out, that's we do. And then when they go back to the stations, that's you do. It also promotes student, uh, collaboration. It facilitates motivation. It provides targeted practice for our primary students. And the integration of literacy stations supports improvement in reading, language, social and writing development.
The first picture on this slide shows Ms. Ransom, a fifth grade teacher at Mill Creek Intermediate, conferring with this student. During the middle portion of the workshop. Conferring is done K five throughout the workshop. And is the heartbeat of the pre-K five literacy block. At this point, Ms. Ransom is working in the role of a researcher. She's having a conversation with the student and providing assessment-based guidance. During this time, she also provides guided practice and feedback. Finally, they set reading goals to work towards before their next conference. This allows Ms. Ransom to truly know her student as a reader and in turn, she is able to personalize instruction. The middle picture shows book clubs. Ms. Ransom also has her students involved in book clubs. Clubs typically have four readers who are similar in their reading abilities. They read the same book and meet two to three times a week to talk about the portion of the text that they just read. At the end of each meeting, club members will decide how much they will read before they meet again and set goals such as, let's continue to read this book. Looking for themes. And at the next book club, we will talk about two themes and provide evidence that supports our work. Book clubs enhance comprehension. Every student brings something different to the page based on their prior knowledge. And by hearing their peers share their thinking, it also increases comprehension. As a reader, I experienced this firsthand during graduate school. One semester, I had a reading theory class and the professor allowed us to discuss the readings each week in a book club format. I gained so much knowledge in this course because of the conversation I had with my peers. It was by far one of my best experiences. The last picture shows a student using technology to support their work in reading workshop. Jessica Keller is going to share a bit more.
Students have daily one-to-one access with technology to enhance and support their learning. One thing. Sample of how the iPad is utilized through create, is through creating learning journals. Students are able to share what they're learning in a variety of ways. One journal page example would be the image with the video camera where they stop and jot. And then record to discuss what they are observing and thinking at that time.
We are very fortunate that for the last six years, we have been able to secure a West Virginia campaign to read by grade level grant. One of the areas that we have focused on is newborn to aged four children. Plus, we've given away nine thousand five hundred books in six years and that equals parents reading aloud to their child. We know that if we start early at reading to our children, it puts them on the path to success. Reading, rhyming, singing and talking begin from birth. And they profoundly influence literacy and language development, the foundations for all other learning. It develops listening skills and expands the vocabulary and truly creates a love of reading. We can remember when we were little and our parents would set us on our lap or would read to us at bedtime. And what a wonderful opportunity that was to also bond with our parents. One of the way we've been able to support this program. Is we've been giving newborn books as part of the hospital's welcome kit for new parents. This year, we incorporated the imagination library in three zip code areas for Berkeley County. And we are doing virtual toddler times where we meet with three-year-old parents and their children. And do activities that boost literacy, plus give them take-home activities to do with their child. Next slide. Another area that we've been able to reach out and in our campaign to read is that we've been able to provide. Early interventionists who focus on early identification and prevention. Small group and individual intense instruction and mastery of grade-level skills. We know that early identification and prevention are important because the gap between the lowest and highest performing children. Is narrow in the lower grades, but then it becomes wider in the upper grades. We've been able to service, um, nine, eight schools, nine interventionists and two hundred and thirty children. Next slide, please. Linda Mills, a retired librarian from Berkeley Heights Elementary, has been one of our interventionists for the last five years. She has a quote that we like to read and it says, as early literacy interventionists. We work with students to reinforce specific foundational reading skills such as phonics, vocabulary, comprehension, fluency. Also, we collaborate with the classroom teachers to design methods of learning that will accommodate the needs of each child. Working in small groups and providing intentional support to students helps them gain confidence in their reading ability. And master grade-level reading skills. Linda's done an awesome job as serving as an interventionist at. Hedgesville Elementary the past several years and this year is serving click students at Hedgesville Elementary.
Sarah Lewis and Jessica Michael Bowman are two small but mighty forces that keep the literacy initiatives in the district moving forward. The work that they do is invaluable. I'm going to let them share a little bit about what they do.
It mainly occurs through what I call coaching cycles. And so coaching goals are opportunities for us to work alongside teachers and children in the classroom. To hone literacy craft and to impact student learning. Typically, we'll start by getting to know the teacher, getting to know the classroom and create goals for that cycle. Goals that the teacher would like to work on, but most importantly, goals that are able to increase and impact student learning engagement. And that really guides the work that we use in the cycle. Full model teaching for the teacher, we co-teach alongside them. I believe in kind of divide and conquer as a teacher students in the classroom, but it's a really hands-on, interactive way. To show some new teaching strategies the teacher might not be familiar with or have used before. And to really, truly make a difference in students' lives each day. And typically, we kind of wrap up that cycle by measuring data. Based on a free post-assessment and seeing how we've impacted the students, but also. How we as coaches and also the teachers have really learned. Aside from our coaching cycles, another form of embedded PL that we offer comes in the form of cohorts. So throughout our cohorts, we are able to work with a group of teachers in which we meet with them throughout the year. And we're able to offer them foundational skills necessary to be successful to teach literacy in the classroom. So in the morning, we will meet with them and we'll give them that, um, very tailored, specific PL that they need. And then in the afternoon, we offer something that we call a massive teacher practice. Where we will take students into a lab-style classroom where they can hone and practice their craft. With real students as well as receive feedback from the coaches and also immediate feedback from their peers. Another resource that we offer for the county is tailored PL that's very school-specific in the form of data teams and. And we also offer county-wide resources, um, with our literacy coaches homepage. And when we think about the impact that we have on teachers and students, we do measure that impact. Every coaching cycle is based upon pre-assessment data. Which we then measure with the post-assessment data.
Jessica, we'll just go ahead and move forward. Go ahead and move forward. As you can see, Sarah and Jessica offer a unique feature with the mega labs and the cohorts that they described. It has really been a game changer in terms of our teachers taking that. Direct explicit instruction that they receive from Sarah and Jessica in the morning sessions. And then the opportunity to provide immediately, immediate practice into an exemplar classroom. And it really allows that transfer so that that knowledge will stick and then it will be. Easily taken back to their classrooms and be very applicable to what they're doing, um, with their students. Next slide, please. These ladies use social media as a tool to continue professional learning for teachers as well as share exemplars from classrooms. They've been working in. Um, you will also see teacher feedback to the coaches for all of their hard work. I think one of our favorites is the very last one is, I couldn't ask for more. This is my twenty-first year of teaching and these trainings and practices have been the most beneficial I've ever had. Hands-on practicing, collaborating with other teachers on real units and learning by doing. Um, so, uh, their sessions are always received, uh, very well and, and they're very positive in nature. And, uh, although I don't think they spotlighted this information in their video, they also do. Uh, administrative cohorts for administrators to help them grow in their literacy understanding and to help our administrators. Understand what they should see when they are doing walkthroughs in a literacy classroom. Next slide, please. Their newest adventure is to help the district grow literacy leaders. Through an application process, they have selected five outstanding teachers to begin growing their expertise as literacy leaders to support school-based. And district professional learning. Next slide.
Hello, I would first like to say thank you to all the students who spoke tonight. Your reflections were eloquent, thoughtful and very meaningful. We are proud of your accomplishments and can tell that you are also a direct reflection. Of rich literacy instruction that has included reading, writing and speaking. So I think tonight was a perfect night to have all of those students. Um, talking about things that have impacted their lives because it's a direct reflection on literacy. And a special thank you to Elijah for talking about his parents. Um, allowing him to be involved in their reading lives and providing him with a rich, um. Supply of literature at home and seeing his first and main role models as readers. So I think those are very important things. That I had not planned on speaking about, but, um, spoke to me tonight after I listened to them. So, um, I'm the Director of Federal Programs and title, we have Title One schools in Berkeley County that also. Provide a lot of resources for literacy and those are the Title One schools that are listed there. We have those, um. Primary and intermediate and a few middle schools as well as a couple, um, uh, private schools. Some Title One supports that we offer, we have forty-five reading and math interventionists that service about thirteen hundred students. We have some social workers. We also, uh, employ some part-time retired interventionists that help with reading and math. We have an extended year program for additional literacy and math instruction. We offer professional development opportunities for staff and we also have parent involvement programs. Um, a lot of things that our reading interventionists do are reading specialists. They, uh, participate in small group instruction with students. So you would see one reading specialist may be working with a small group of students on targeted vocabulary skills. Um, intervention strategies, practicing fluency. And, um, students are referred for that based on their, their scores that, that teachers see on their star. Um, informal and, and other informal reading assessments. And a group of teachers and specialists meet quarterly to review student data and then make, um, references to Title One programs. For the, uh, reading specialists to work with them. So these groups are fluid and students can move in and out of them based on data and performance. And I am gonna share a video with you. This is a video that was done by a student who's actually very near and dear to my heart. Um, this is my daughter Natalie and she has been a student in Berkeley County Schools since she was in kindergarten. And she was fortunate enough to attend a Title One school and you will see that as she, as you listen to her speak. That, um, she has benefited from Title One. She, um, struggled a lot with literacy growing up. Which, um, you know, I'm her mother and I'm a reading specialist and she still struggled with literacy. We did all of the right things at home. But it just didn't connect with her. So fortunately, she, um, attended Inwood and she had impact from a Title One teacher. And it has, um, really. Inwood, and she had impact from a Title I teacher, and it has really improved her literacy. And she is now in fifth grade and has an amazing teacher who does the workshop model, and she has grown exponentially and is now a student who is on reading level. So she speaks very softly. She doesn't get that from her mother. But so turn your mics up, and hopefully you'll be able to hear in her own words what Natalie has to say about literacy.
My name is Natalie Powell. I'm a fifth grade student at Berkeley County, and my teacher is Ms. France. Reading was hard for me when I was younger. I had trouble decoding words and figuring out the meaning outcome, and just remembering sight words. I had a little extra help with a reading teacher named Ms. Butler back in my primary. We worked on extra skills with a couple of the classmates, and that really helped me out as a reader. Now, Ms. France is in class. She'll, she uses Reader's Workshop. She'll read a book aloud to us, and then teaches a skill, and we'll discuss it, and then we'll like branch off and do it ourselves, and then we'll go back and discuss it. And then we will go into a book club, our book clubs, and we will read a certain book and discuss it there. And I really like the book clubs because I feel like that we, like, I like discussing it with other people. So it helps me, like, say they get something out of a book that I did it, so I can, like, figure out, like, I can, like, oh, yeah.
So thank you for listening. And you can see by what she has to say that she's growing and learning as a reader because she's having conversation with her peers. And something that she didn't say that I would like to add in there is there's a lot of student choice going on in that class. So she gets to pick things that she's interested in and that she wants to read. And that's important to students. We don't always, you know, if there's something that they're not really interested in, and we're forcing them to read it, sometimes they're not gleaning as much meaning from that as they would from books of their choice. So I'm very fortunate that she has been a successful student and has really gone through the Title I process. But I'm really fortunate that she has a teacher who loves literacy, and Natalie really loves her teacher and has really been able to benefit from participating in the workshop model. So, next slide.
Moving forward with a campaign to read by grade level, with next year's funding, we are hoping to focus on newborns to age three. Research shows that one out of three children are not ready for school. We want to expand those zip code areas for Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, which provides books, one book a month until they are four years old. We want to continue utilizing literacy interventionists to close the reading gap and to eliminate those opportunity gaps that we speak about in our strategic plan. We want to provide extended day and extended year activities, such as summer library, after-school book clubs at our targeted schools. And we know this year, more than ever, it's important with the social and emotional learning of children to support families and to provide engagement and literacy activities. Prior to the pandemic, we were able to reach out, as you can see in the picture, we went to the Beehive and provided activities for parents, grandparents, and their children or grandchildren. And we went to Chick-fil-A and did a literacy night. So we want to continue that. We think those are all important goals that will help us to reach that academic excellence and help students in their reading growth.
Research says to make real progress, students need expert instruction, access to books they find fascinating, and time to read. Moving forward, we have the following recommendations. We need an increase in the number of literacy interventionists. We need an increase in the number of literacy coaches. Sarah and Jessica, as I said, are small but mighty, and they are building those literacy leaders, but that's just the tip of the iceberg. To do the work and to do it well, we need additional literacy coaches. We need consistent district-wide interventions and diagnostic assessments. We need to provide classroom teachers with extensive classroom libraries for students to have easy access to text. On average, one classroom should have a thousand books in a classroom library for students. And we are also pursuing grant opportunities as they become available. We are working to build reading lives for our students. Because everyone is a reader, some just haven't found their favorite book yet. Thank you for your time this evening. And that concludes our presentation.
If we ask questions?
Sure, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. Several years ago, I was a volunteer member on the Catholic Charities, Catholic Charities Board of Directors. And we worked and found out that a lot of indigent, low-income families had trouble with transportation. So I worked with the previous administration, and we found a surplus bus. And it was supposed to work with United Way, but, and James Rumsay was going to retrofit this bus and let it take it into neighborhoods and where there were concentrations. I guess it's the zip code targeting that you're doing. And I, I don't know that it ever came about, but if it didn't, I think that transportation, like I said, is a major issue. You can not only work with one, you know, newborns to three-year-olds, but you could also be working with their parents from GEDs, work with other agencies like in health, human services, employment. But it would be going to the parents, and a lot of times, these parents, that if we don't go to them, they're pushing children out in the weather and baby strollers and everything else. But that was an idea that we, we had put aside a bus, and it was supposed to be retrofitted. I hope that it's in play, but I haven't heard anything. Have you heard anything about a bus that's going around the neighborhoods where you're reaching out to the families? Did you hear me?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Murphy, I have heard about that. I think when, when COVID came upon us, it was put on hold. But we certainly do plan to revisit that with, with James Rumsay.
And I think, go ahead.
One thing we were going to do prior to the pandemic, we had worked with Martin's Landing, and we were going to use their resource, like they call it their gathering room, and we were going to use that to meet with parents. But the pandemic came, and we couldn't do that. So as soon as we're able to do that, we are going out to like areas like Martin's Landing and working with the parents.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hoff, mister.
You're welcome, Mr. Murphy.
Is that it? Anyone else have any comments or questions? Thank you, Robyn Bev. For the presentation tonight, it's always very informative and gives us some guidance about where we want to go and what we want to do. So thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, Dr. Queen.
Thank you, Dr. Queen.
I have number eight on the agenda is the action items, and then that we have the bid compensation and classification study. Dr. Schooling?
Good evening, Dr. Queen, members of the board and senior staff. The compensation classification study was put out for RFP. We reviewed that as a team in the central office. And first of all, with Mrs. Powell present, I want to say thank you to her and her team for helping to fund this endeavor as we go through to look at a compensation consultant who can help plan and evaluate our base pay review within Berkeley County Schools and job classifications to make sure that there's internal equity throughout the system, as well as look at ways to provide for critical needs and additional fundings and develop a three- to five-year compensation plan for the district. We had five companies bid for the RFP, and looking at those proposals, we did not feel that the least valued product that was offered would meet the needs of the district, nor the quality of the product that we were looking for. So therefore, we're recommending that the classification and compensation study project be awarded to Experience Management Institute, doing business as K-12 Talent Institute for the amount of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. And this is the same company which did the superintendent community and staff surveys during the superintendent search.
I hear a motion from the board to appoint classification and compensation study project be awarded to Experience Management Institute, doing business as the K-12 Talent Institute for the amount of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So move this back with.
Is there here a second?
Second.
A motion, Mr. Beckwith, a second, by Dr. Gilpin, to approve the compensation and classification study being awarded to Experience Management Institute, the amount of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions, Murphy. This, how is this being funded, Dr. Schooling?
This is being funded through Title II to look at the retention and classification, or retention and recruitment of our employees.
Okay. These one hundred positions, and you have in brackets, unique job descriptions. Could you give me examples of what those positions would be?
That would include everything from a custodian, secretary, principal, teacher, all the positions at the central office, everything that is unique, that has a different job description. Using the certified list, those are, we have at least a hundred different job titles within the system.
And a lot of these jobs are on, we have salary schedules, both at the state and local level. Am I correct?
The state says a minimum, and we add to those, yes.
So what percentage would you anticipate these being at the management level? Of these one hundred positions you've identified?
I don't have the list with me this evening. That's at the office. Again, we look at the certified list positions. There will be a higher number looking at those positions because they are unique, where there's only one director versus a teacher that could be used throughout multiple schools and multiple positions. So you think this is one hundred positions of our twenty-six hundred regular employees?
But, so we're looking for people on the certified list, or there's only one or two in that category? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
No, we're looking district-wide. There is just, we're saying that there's a hundred unique job titles throughout the district. To be able to look and see if the market trend, if we're paying above, below, or average of the market geographically within our region, within the state, and within nationally. So we'll have a lot of useful data to be able to provide a three- to five-year study on how you can work, how we and you can work to improve those salaries.
So we're looking at a regional impact of what the neighboring counties are, our neighboring states, the market. I'm just wondering, when you say one hundred positions, are you saying one hundred categories or one hundred?
Unique titles.
Titles. I'm kind of concerned about this proposal because it sounds like there will be pay raises. I doubt if there'll be any salary reductions. And I'm worried that this may be a limited number of people receiving salary increases. And when we have neighboring states like Maryland just passed the bill over Governor Hogan's veto, it's going to give us an impact on Berkeley County, what they're doing, it's a sizable amount of money. Virginia just passed collective bargaining last year, so I'm sure they're going to be drawing from us to the second. And West Virginia has been pulling the plug, I think, on public education. I'm just concerned that this, this study will impact a limited number of people if we follow through with this three-to-five-year process, because we can't give our regular classroom teacher the salary that neighboring states can entice them away. And, and I've just, I've just have a lot of reservations about this, this whole proposal. We're going to be paying seven hundred and fifty dollars per position, and I guess that's position slash category. And I'm just, I'm very reluctant to support this. I had a teacher call me up today, saying how their class, how their faculty senate was encouraged to take their faculty senate money and spend it on classroom libraries, which I just heard. But if we're taking seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I mean, seventy-five thousand dollars for this, and then we're telling our faculty senates, which I think by law, we're not supposed to try to influence how they spend their money, they are independent bodies. But if we're trying to coerce them or persuade them or whatever to spend money, and then we're spending money like this, I believe it's a bad message. We should be putting our money into where, if we're going to buy a thousand books for each classroom, are we still going to have public lib, or school libraries at the local level? Too many questions here. I have too many concerns. I think this is going boomerang on us. And I, I have to, I have to be against it. Regrettably, have to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, for your comments.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on Mr. Murphy's points. I do agree with him on a lot of stuff. I do have a lot of questions about everything, so I'll just start. Regarding the budget for Title II, what is our, what is our county budget on Title II? Anyone can answer that?
Mr. Butts is not here tonight, or?
I'm sorry. I can go ahead and answer that for you, Mr. Martin. I accidentally muted myself instead of unmuted. So Title II is the, the funding source that we get that can only be used on professional development resources. So this type of compensation study does fall under part of Title II initiative, which is the recruitment and retainment of educators and also administrators. Title II could not be used to purchase classroom libraries. That is, that is not an allowable resource under Title II. So we could not use that funding in order to purchase classroom libraries. We get about seven hundred thousand dollars in Title II funding, and it does go towards some salaries, such as academic coaches and a couple new teacher mentors. We also fund professional development resources out of that, professional development trainings, professional development for administrators. So there, it's solely for professional development. So that is the funding source that would be used for this.
Gotcha. Thank you, Ms. Powell.
And I do actually have a comment about the, the request for using faculty senate money for purchasing classroom libraries. It is mid-February, and teachers do get faculty senate money every year. And it was really just brought up in a meeting today because I was the one that actually said it, and that if you have not spent your faculty senate money at this point, then that might be something that you would look to purchase and use your faculty senate money resources for is some books for your own personal classroom. I was a classroom teacher myself and was happy to use my faculty senate money to buy books for my classroom, for teachers, for teachers to use, or other teachers to use, myself to use, and then also my students. So it wasn't like I was forcing teachers to do that. It was really just a comment made that if you have not spent your faculty senate money, classroom books for your, for your classroom is an allowable thing that you could spend your money on. So I just would like to clarify that because I was the one that said it.
Also, Mr. Murphy, I'd like to add, we actually give each school an allocation towards library books each year.
I'm aware of that. Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah, my next question is, there's a twenty-five grand gap between the lowest bidder and the recommend, the recommended consulting firm. What was, why, that's a substantial amount if the budget's only seven hundred and fifty grand. Why, why them? Researching them online, I cannot find that much information. Why, why them? Um, researching them online, I cannot find that much information. As they're, they're doing business as is the K-12 Talent Institute. I cannot find a single thing about them online. Like, why them versus the twenty-five grand, um, less consulting firm?
We had a group of, such as Betty Ann, Dr. Murphy, uh, myself, Brad Spinago, and looking at the product examples that they gave to us, uh, past experiences and references, it just was not a fit for Berkeley County. And giving us quality data that we could turn around and actually use.
Do you have some examples of clients they've had?
All of that was part of, the examples were provided with references to us and the lower one, uh, they've all, all five did provide us with references, yes.
Gotcha, because I, again, I can't find anything of value from the company. Like, I can't even find who's on their team per se. I don't feel comfortable with, um, going with them. Just based on that, I cannot find any other, uh, recent clients, any, um,
Provided to us and we did check references. Uh, I spoke to many of those individuals myself, as well as, we actually, the, the individuals that will be working on the project gave us the presentation. It wasn't a marketing department providing us with a presentation and then handed off. We will actually be working with the ones that provided us with the presentation.
Gotcha. Thank you. Yeah, I just, because you mentioned that it's, um, the twenty-five grand more firm isn't a fit for the county, but I'm looking at uh, management advisory group and they have, um, many cities like Tampa, the federal government. Major, major cities that they've worked with and I don't, what, like what, yeah, I'm getting at.
I mean, the, I mean, we, I could share with you after, it's some point, the presentation, uh, PowerPoint that they provided to us uh, that list all their references as well as the, uh, districts that they currently serve as well.
Gotcha, because a twenty-five grand difference for, um, a study, because I know how consulting firms work, um, is a pretty hefty chunk of the budget, actually. So that's just my thoughts.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes, uh, Dr. Schooly, I may have missed your presentation, but, uh, what kind of turnaround time are we looking, uh, to get this study?
This study will be almost a year to complete because of the time and the detail that's done with something like this to rate the job factors and the responsibilities of each of these unique jobs. So it is a time-consuming process between the consultant and herself for a full year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just a clarification, Murphy, again. Uh, am I on, Dr. Queen?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, I did read Friday's newsletter and I met, and I saw that principals were being encouraged about these classroom librarians. So I just want to make sure that that's part of the discussion coming out of faculty senate firms. It's a, uh, it's a very this, this faculty senate, just briefly for the history, came out of the nineteen ninety strike. And it was an attempt to give teachers, uh, faculties at the, at the, uh, school level money and discretion.
That was Does this have to do with the, uh, motion that's on the floor about the, um, the classification study?
I, I, you, good point, sir. I, I relinquished the, uh, the, uh,
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say aye.
Or Murphy, no. No.
Have, uh, the motion carries, uh, three to two, uh, in favor of the motion. Uh, we will move on to the, uh, next item on the agenda, which is the personnel actions. Dr. Schooly?
Thank you, Dr. Queen. The personnel actions dated Monday, February the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one are as follows. We have six new coaching appointments. One resignation of a coach. One resignation of an extra duty contract. We have one new healthcare appointment. We have three one-sevenths appointments. Two new professional appointments. One resignation of a professional at the end of the school year. One retirement at the end of the school year for professionals. Starting with the service, we have three, three new service appointments. Three retirements of service at various time, at various times. One resignation of a service employee. Three transfers of service employees. We have one service employee asking to remain in her current position and not move next school year. So we're asking to rescind that. We have one upgrade of a service employee obtaining the necessary certification. On the substitute service side, we have one new appointment there. We have one revised substitute appointment. Uh, the leave of absence has been extended again. This individual is doing, we have nine removals of substitute bus operators with the seniority list coming out mid-year. Uh, they're reviewed their list of those individuals actually working and these, uh, do not meet your board policy and have not been working. And then we have one new substitute teacher for a total of forty personnel actions dated for Monday, February the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I hear a motion from the board to approve the service professional coaching and substitute personnel actions as presented tonight. This is Monday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I may move, we approve the, uh, professional service substitute and coaching positions as presented?
Sir, a second?
Second.
So, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
A motion by Mr. Beck with a second on Mr. Martin to approve all the personnel actions as presented tonight. This is all dated February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion?
I, I just have a question for Dr. Schooly. I was trying to look back through previous personnel things. I saw a note, we have a gentleman named Mr. Logan Reed on the COVID team. And I, I just wanted to run down that person's, uh, whereabouts, but I, nothing, nothing on this agenda.
That individual is employed through Epic.
Oh, he is. Okay. Okay, so I, I saw where he's on COVID team. Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Item number nine on the agenda is a board announcements. Does anyone have anything to announce, uh, before the, uh, panel tonight? If not, we will go to superintendent announcements. Dr. Murphy?
Thank you, Dr. Queen. I'm going to bring up, uh, the, uh, presentation or my announcements this evening. But, um, before I get into, uh, sharing some information with you this evening, I would like to, uh, recognize, um, Ms. Sharon Kizner. Ms. Kizner has served our district now for twenty-four years in a variety of different roles. She is going to be embarking on a new adventure in her life. And I would like all of us to just, uh, wish her well, uh, thank her. And, um, she, uh, has been informing me that this will be her last board meeting this evening. So Sharon, I think we've, uh, spoken to you about your service to Berkeley County schools. We want to thank you. It is bittersweet, but we know your next adventure and there's some exciting things happening in your life. And if we could give Sharon a round of applause as well, that would be great. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy.
We also want to welcome, uh, Michelle Lee. Michelle is, uh, coming on board uh, and taking up where Sharon, uh, is stepping off. And so, uh, welcome, Michelle. We're glad to have you here with us and we are right now, uh, as part of a transition uh, in, uh, bringing, uh, Michelle on board as Sharon, uh, heads off into, uh, you know, different adventures in her life with her family. So, welcome, Michelle.
Welcome, Michelle.
So I'd like to just, uh, share a couple of things with you this evening first, that it is, um, uh, Career and Technical Education Month and, uh, the West Virginia Department of Education has continued to innovate with the simulated, uh, workplace models, also changes with the, uh, traditional classroom and student-led companies. Uh, and that is a focus not only here in our schools, but also part of, uh, RUMSE. We average a hundred and eighty-eight completers from the four high schools each year, uh, on a five-year average. Uh, and this includes areas of study that include agricultural fluid, uh, natural resources, business, uh, management and finance, marketing, STEM, bakery and pastries at the Musliman Cafe, uh, and other areas of specialty. Our, uh, Deca Clubs are operating school stores and the Future Farmers of America are doing a variety of things from ham, bacon and egg shows and sales. So, uh, thank you to Ken Pack and all of our school coun- counselors that are advocates for that and celebrating CTE month. I'd also like to, uh, recognize our Service Personnel Week. We have over a thousand full-time employees in fourteen different categories and those individuals are also supported by substitutes. Uh, and this is just one of the responsibilities here pictured, uh, as we, uh, deal with some of the inclement weather we have recently have, but we want to thank all of our service employees and recognize them for the contributions that they provide, um, all of us here in Berkeley County schools as part of the team. As you, um, heard earlier, we're celebrating Black History Month here and in a collaboration with Jefferson County. Uh, over the next several weeks, uh, we are going to be having, uh, Zoom lecture studies. We've had two thus far, uh, and we've brought in different e- experts in the field of technology and STEM to share their experience and encourage our youth to become involved in that. We've got our next, um, speaker coming up through a virtual lecture, uh, tomorrow evening and we encourage folks to come out and join us. Um, we've got, uh, Dr. Lauren Augustin, who's the Executive Director of the National Academies of Science, Engineering, Medicine, and Gulf Research, uh, speaking with us, um, tomorrow evening. This will actually put us at the, the midpoint, um, and the speaker series also extends into, um, into, uh, the first week of March. So, uh, thank you to Dr. Walker for helping to organize this and also the collaboration with Jefferson County Schools. So this evening, I'd, I'd like to just talk with you a little bit about, um, where we are uh, and what next steps, uh, we're preparing to take as we, uh, continue to deal with many issues that are happening here, um, in relationship to the pandemic. And I want to give you a little bit of background as far as, um, how, um, you know, I or we have arrived at what we see as the next step for us uh, as we looked at gradually returning to, um, how we started the school year with either the brick or the click pathway and five days of, um, in-person instruction for those students that are brick. We've been watching very carefully as we moved from, um, all remote into the, um, alternating two days of hybrid for our pre-K through eight students. And, um, we're considering that we would gradually make a return as things improved as we had the rollout also of the vaccine. And we created some internal monitoring systems as far as looking at the, the number of students and staff that we're having to either quarantine or that we're testing positive. And as we've seen, uh, we've seen both the infection rate and the positivity numbers continue to decline in Berkeley County as well as in the state and also across our nation. So all those signs are pointing in a good direction. For the last several days, also noted on the DHHR map, we are orange. Um, and so that also allows us to have our high school students uh, return to in-person instruction and we're going to talk a little bit about that in a minute or elaborate on it. We have to differentiate between pre-K through eight and then high school because they fall under two different systems of, of determining when students return to school. We've also rolled out, um, vaccinations for employees that are fifty years of age and older. We're continuing to do that. Thank you to Ron Stevens and all members of the COVID team. Uh, Elise Gregory, Judy McCune, uh, Holly Branch, um, as kind of the core group of that team in making that happen. We've also worked very closely with our school nurses as well as, um, the local health department, uh, and that has been successful. Many of you have experienced that and seen how well that has, uh, rolled out. We have one more administration that falls to the responsibility of the schools. And that is going to be happening next week. I too want to let you know that we are continuing to advocate with state officials as well as local officials to make sure that when more vaccines become available that the balance of our employees, uh, receive those vaccines. I will also, uh, tell you, as you have a, a picture on this from watching the news that I was informed a week ago that we have, um, over thirty-two thousand, uh, individuals in, uh, this uh, area of Berkeley and Morgan County that are sixty-five years of age or older who still need to receive a vaccine. Uh, at that point in time, though, we were only receiving six hundred doses of vaccine being made available to, um, our lo- local health department. So, uh, as was shared with me, uh, you know, the amount of time to be able to address that group as one priority uh, right now with the flow of vaccine is going to continue to be a challenge. Again, my position and my advocacy is that, uh, I don't want to move ahead of anyone in line, but I want to make sure when more vaccine becomes available, our staff have the opportunity and we will continue to advocate on that front. We've also developed an internal monitoring system and actually, uh, Dr. Logan Reed, whose name was mentioned earlier is, has created that. We are looking at both staff and students of the number that are having to quarantine as well as the numbers, uh, number that may have tested positive. There has been some adjustments also with the CDC guidelines, um, that have resulted in staff having uh, and students having to quarantine for shorter periods of time. And again, just like the, um, uh, the local DHHR map, uh, our numbers from those internal, um, monitorings are continuing to move in the right direction. I think we all need to continue to be vigilant with our mitigation strategies, wearing face coverings. Uh, the recommendation now is because of some of the variants that you wear two face coverings. Also practicing good, um, hygiene with washing hands, practicing social distancing uh, and all the things that we are very mindful of, uh, that have gotten us, I think, uh, to this point in time. And I think very positive. Um, I know the weather, uh, the inclement weather has been a challenge. I also know we needed to allow some time to, um, you know, ha- prepare folks for this transition. Most notably, part of that transition is, um, revising or retooling or reorienting our food service delivery and, uh, Tracy Heck and her team are, have that in motion. So based on, um, where we are right now, my recommendation is that as of next Monday, February the twenty-second, we turn, return to five days of in-person instruction for students that are on the brick pathway. And my hope is that as things continue and improve, we will be able to maintain that for the, the rest of the school year. Now for students that are pre-K through eight, there is, um, you know, uh, there is no, uh, direction or guidance coming from the DHHR map. Contrary though, uh, for high school students, that DHHR map, um, provides guidance about about when students do or don't attend school. We are appealing to the state, to the State Department of Education, that they relook at that. We feel that that is a barrier for being able to get our high school students back in on a consistent, you know, pattern of instruction. We also see that that could be challenged by students transitioning depending on if the map, you know, jumps back and forth between red and orange. Granted, I'm hoping that doesn't happen and we move toward gold and yellow and ultimately green, but there is that possibility. So while we're mounting a campaign of advocacy for that to change, we will watch, you know, we'll watch the map very closely as far as how that looks for students. I'm going to ask Mr. Dellinger to talk a little bit about high schools at this point and what this may mean for high schools, most specifically for returning to instruction as well as what it means for our co-curricular theater chorus programs as well as athletics. So Mr. Dellinger, I'll go to the next slide. And if you could speak to high schools, because it is a little bit of a, a difference in relationship to the pre-K through eight.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. As Dr. Murphy indicated, for our high schools, grades nine through 12, we do monitor the West Virginia DHHR color-coded mat. Last week, that color-coded mat did go to orange, which allows us to bring our brick high school students back into in-person instruction. We were still orange today. So beginning tomorrow, we will be welcoming our brick high school students back. You see that Spring Mills High School, as all four of us, our high schools do on their websites, have messages for their students. For our high school students, this week, we will be within the, we'll still be working with the hybrid model. So on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, Group One for grades nine through 12, which is our students whose last name begins with A through K, will be attending Tuesday and Wednesday. And then our Group Two students for high school, which will be those students with L through Z, they will attend on Thursday and Friday of this week. And again, hoping that we're still orange. Beginning next week, we will have our students back five days, five days a week. But this will be a good opportunity for our students to, as we bring our brick students back to get accustomed to the procedures. It's been a while since our high school students have been back in person. So this will be a good leadway into bringing them back, our brick students back full-time. Also want to remind our students and parents that our click students will continue with their normal schedule that they, that they have been on during this time. A couple of other things with our high schools is that entry reports for the third nine weeks will be posted on Schoology next Thursday, which is February 25th. The waiver of the West Virginia Board of Education Policy 2436.10, that's participation in extracurricular activities. That is actually what is known as the 2.0 grade point average. The 2.0 is a West Virginia Board of Education policy, which requires students at the end of a previous semester to have maintained a 2-point, a grade point average to be eligible to participate in the following semester of athletics. Last week, Clayton Birch, the State Superintendent of Schools, he waived that policy. And this is what his waiver has said. The fact that there has been such a transition with the virtual and the in-person learning and the adjustments that students had to, and parents had to become accustomed to. What he has done is that, at this point, and practices did begin today on February 15th, he has waived the 2.0 grade point average until March 19th. So at this point in time, students do not have to meet the 2.0 grade point average to practice or play in extracurricular activities. But on March 19th, our schools will have to go back, take a look at the students' grades at that time. If students do not have a 2-point, this is based on the third nine weeks. It doesn't go back to the semester. It goes back to the third nine weeks. If they have a 2.0 at that point in time, they will remain eligible to participate. If they have not raised their GPA up to a 2.0 at that time, then they will become immediately ineligible. And that's the policy. If anybody has any questions.
Murphy? Just, I'm looking at a memorandum here from the Department of Health and Human Resources from Shannon McBee,